All right, at this time I will call the May 16th, 2018 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin.
Here.
Ms. Yutman.
Here.
Mr. Warrenbrun.
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf.
And Mr. Welch.
There are none.
Second.
Hi.
At this time, we will call for hearing ZBA-2018-major-06. May we have a staff report, please?
Okay. Good evening. So this is a request for a variance that would allow a basement in a new multifamily residential building in the MOR district. The design of the building without the basement was approved by the MOR Development Review Board in January, and the current design is substantially the same. It just adds a basement to the already-approved design. This request would make the project more financially viable for the owner, or for the property owner. And the reason this request is before you tonight is that the zoning ordinance requires that basements in multifamily buildings count towards the floor, towards the gross floor area of the building, and hence towards the calculation for floor-area ratio. So while above-ground, the building looks essentially the same with or without a basement, the FAR, the floor-area ratio maximum, is exceeded when you add a basement to the design. This building, on the building is, or the property, is located on Green Street, on the 400 block of Green Street, in an area that has a mix of other uses around it. You'll see other single-family homes, most often rentals. There's other high, or there are high-density apartments, and there's also the commercial building to the east, the Timothy John Salon and Spa. If you look at the, in Exhibit D, I just wanted to point out the differences between the approved plans and then the proposed plans. There are some slight differences. So the approved plans, you see on the screen in front of you, and then I'm just going to jump to the proposed plans, where I've highlighted in red, those red boxes, the areas where the changes to the site plan are proposed. So since there would be a basement unit, there'd be a large window well on the east side of the building to allow for light and egress. And then on the backside of the building, there would now, now is proposed a sunken patio, which would come off of that, off of that basement. I did also note, as I was looking at this earlier, the configuration of the air-conditioning condensers would be slightly different between this and the approved plan, so just jump back and forth between those real quick. And I do think that there might need to be some screening of these, of those air-conditioning units, because I think the intent of what was approved by the Development Review Board, I think they, since they were looking at this plan and there were, there was screening there, I think they'd probably want to see that in whatever final plans are approved. I'll go with that in a minute. So moving on to the variance criteria, I'll run through these relatively quickly but thoroughly. Okay, so the first variance criteria, if you're following along in your memo, they start on page two. And the first is, ask if there are special circumstances or practical difficulties with respect to the parcel in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance. So in this case, it may not be financially feasible to construct a building on the site that doesn't include a basement unit. I imagine if it were feasible, they might need to find cost-cutting measures elsewhere. In addition, the alley behind this property is currently unimproved, it's unpaved, and the owner would need to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the city. It would be 50/50 cost-share, is my understanding, to pave that alley, so that adds to the cost of the project. So that is a practical difficulty with this property. Criteria number two, similar to number one, there would be the additional financial burden to pave that alley, and I suppose I should state, that criteria says the proposed variances will not serve as a special privilege, because the request is necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure. It's not generally applicable to other land or structures in the same district. Criteria number three is that the variances requested were not the result of a situation created by, created knowingly by the petitioner. So at this case, the application came in for design review, and during our staff review for that design review, we advised the applicant that the plans they had submitted did not meet the FAR requirements, because the first plans they submitted included a basement. We advised that they could submit revised plans that did not include a basement to go ahead with the, with the development review case, since it needed development review in any case. So they went forward with that. The design was approved. And then after the design was approved and more detailed engineering and architectural plans were, were made, it became apparent to the owner that they really needed that basement unit to, to make the project financially feasible. So then they proceeded with this variance application. Criteria number four is that the variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This is one of the main things that the MOR Development Review Board considers when they choose to approve a project or not, and that board unanimously approved the design of the building. Again, it was without a basement, but the, if you look on the, at your last exhibit, at the, the building elevations, the character, so let's see, you can't tell, I can't tell which is different, because they're the same. But with or without the basement, the, you know, the, the view from the neighborhood is going to be the same, so the character, which was, again, considered by the MOR Development Review Board, would remain the same. Number five is that the variances will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent properties. So again, the only, the difference here is, is adding one unit to the basement, so staff doesn't feel that that would be likely to cause a nuisance to adjacent property owners. There would be one more parking space required that could not be accommodated on-site, but that could be leased from an adjacent, or from a nearby property owner. And the applicant has informed us, they've, they've spoken to the Timothy John owners, and they would be willing to lease a space to the property owner. And finally, number six is that the variances generally represent the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate their request. The building footprint would remain the same here, they're, they're just adding a basement, so really, it does represent the minimum deviation if you wanted to put a basement on the building. So. That concludes my, my report. The zoning board of appeals has three options in this case. You can forward the case to the city council with a recommendation to approve the variance request. You can recommend that, recommend that council approve the variance with certain conditions, or you can deny the request. Staff would recommend, recommends approval, a recommendation of approval to the city council. Thank you. I can take questions. I know the applicant is here.
Thank.
Questions as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
I just have one question. To get to the parking, do you walk around all the way out to the sidewalk and all the way around the building?
So there is, yeah, I believe that's, so the front entrance is here, so you would, there is the walkway here. It's also an accessible ramp, and then there's steps here as well, but yes, you would need to walk around the side there. Yeah.
Go ahead.
How many bedrooms are required?
There would be, with this proposal, there would be 11 bedrooms. And the, in the approved, in the approved, there would be nine, or there are nine in what has been approved so far.
And how many parking spaces are required for 11 bedrooms?
Well, it depends on the unit mix, but in this case, in this case, for the, for the, for what's been approved, they would require five spaces. For what's being proposed, they would require six. Or is that right? Yeah. Yeah, that's correct.
Are there any additional questions for, for staff? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Is the applicant, or anyone on behalf of the applicant, here? Please come forward. You've been here before, so you know the procedure to sign in.
Andrew Fell, I'm the architect for the project. I have a couple, just points and a few clarifications. First, on, on the parking, we do, there is enough parking to accommodate the use on the site. When the parking becomes deficient is if someone moves into the building that needs an accessible space, we have to provide an accessible space. But until that, until someone moves in that requires that, it's not required to be provided. So we have, essentially for the building as designed, we have enough parking, but if we need to provide an accessible space, we've talked to the neighbor, and he's, he is willing to lease a space to the owner, and then we would put the accessible space on the site. So technically, there is enough parking provided on the site to accommodate the use of the building. And I, I just want to make a couple other, I think, clarifications on our point, that really the, the idea of the FAR for the basement came up in the plan commission a couple weeks ago, because we had a vote on a, on a issue with the, with the, with the FAR for basements. And it was discussed in the meeting that really the intent of, of including FAR in the basements was to avoid in multifamily buildings, the idea of introducing garden units, which are half in the ground and half out of the ground. And so that was really the nature, the intent of that part of the ordinance, and what we're doing in this building is not that at all. Our basement stays totally underground. The building is no taller, no bigger than it would be if we didn't include a basement. And in fact, the building's actually smaller, because in the, in the version of this building where we're not allowed, well, where we don't have a basement, we have a sprinkler room to provide sprinkler service for the building, which is a pretty big room. It's about 10 by 12 or so. And without a basement, we're actually forced to put that building on grade, or that part, that room on grade in the building. So the bulk of the building is actually bigger if we don't include a basement. And really, the intent of the FAR in an ordinance is to regulate the bulk of the building. So it's, it's regulating kind of the, the scope and how imposing necessarily the building is on, on the environment, and we are actually introducing a basement to reduce the bulk of our building. So we're actually meeting more of the intent of the ordinance by putting in a basement than by not putting in a basement. So that's kind of the, the, one of the reasons that we think including a basement in this project is more appropriate than not. So that's probably enough, and I'll answer questions.
So it's a small, so it's a smaller footprint?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Are there additional questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Just a minor thing. Kevin noted that there was not the same type of screening provided for the units.
Oh, yeah, I should, I should have addressed that. That's the, I'll, I'll claim drafting error. What, what our intent all along is to put the condensing units for this building on the roof, and we had, that change came up in the, in the MOR review process, and we agreed to put them on the roof, and quite frankly, in the process of redoing these drawings for this, I forgot. So there, there, there will be no condensing units on the ground, they will all be stuck on the roof, and they're in, I don't know how to get back to our picture, but the, it, the way the building is designed, it has a flat roof on the front part of it, and these can be set far enough back so they're not visible from the street.
Additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishes to be heard in favor of this petition? Hearing no one, anyone opposed to this? Anyone opposed to this petition? All right, then I believe we're ready to call this question for vote. Motion and vote.
Okay, I'll move that we approve case ZBA-2018-major-06, and forward it to the city council with a recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in the memo.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's now been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I believe we're ready to call this for a vote.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Ms. Chester?
Yes.
That motion has been approved unanimously and will be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration at what meeting?
June 4th.
At their June 4th meeting. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call case ZBA-2018-major-07 for hearing.
The following is a request by Fairlon Village Development LLC for a reduction in the required yard setback from five feet to zero feet on the south side of Hollywood Drive Alley in the R5 medium-high-density, multiple-family zoning district. Fairlon Village Development LLC is the property owner for Fairlon Village. They are seeking a major variance for a reduction in the required setback along Hollywood Drive, which is an alley that would allow them to construct a garage over several off-street parking spaces. Just, I first want to sort of give a visualization of where the subject properties are located. This is Fairlon Village, south-central Urbana, so to speak. If you go a little south down Vine Street on the west, Anderson Street on the east, Michigan Avenue to the south, that sort of gives you, this is completely within the confines of that apartment complex and condominiums. When the space was developed in the mid-'60s, the subject properties, along with seven parking spaces to the west, were designated as parking parcels. They were specifically parceled out to provide off-street parking for the multifamily units that are to the north. There was a garage constructed over those 13 parking spaces that provided individual garage stall, 13 individual garage stalls for 13 parking spaces. In 2009, there was a fire that burned down that entire garage. I want to make a correction for what's indicated in the staff report. It was our understanding that only a portion of that garage burned down, and a portion remained which is still standing. That is not the case whatsoever. I've been informed by the applicant. The entire garage burned down, the garage that covered 13 parking spaces. Part of, a garage, a garage was reconstructed over six of those parking parcels. The other seven parcels have been, remained as open off-street parking spaces. The request is for a variance so that they may construct a garage with individual parking stalls over these remaining seven parking spaces. The zoning for the area is all R5 surrounding the subject properties, just to give an idea of what the zoning area looks like. If the major variance is granted, it would be a garage that is constructed right next to, over those seven stall, seven parking parcels, right next to the existing garage. This is what the subject properties, the number ones, look like on the right, towards the east. On the left is, those hashed parcels are where the existing garage is, and the open spaces to the east are where the variance is being requested for. That would allow a new garage to be constructed. It would be, as mentioned earlier, seven individual stalls for purposes of tenants that's, you know, storing their vehicles, or just for storage. It'd be 10 to 12 feet wide and 22.25 feet in length. They would be, they would, they would be designed to have matching features such as a pitched roof, similar siding, shingles on the roof as well, or just a similar sort Section 65B requires that no permanent structures, including an accessory structure such as a garage, shall be built in a required yard setback. Section 63C2B1 states that any variance request that deviates more than 25% from requirements of the zoning ordinance, it must be a major variance. So in order to construct this garage, it must receive a variance to encroach into the required yard. The amount of deviation makes it a major variance as opposed to a minor variance. Just wanted to point that out. The subject properties are rather limited in the space that they are located. They are not able to set back much further from the alley, because there is an apartment building very close to it, if they were to try and meet the required setback. The traffic flow for the street is a one-way street that enters off of Vine Street, which is west, and allows traffic to move east. They, it requires cars to just move eastward where they can access several off-street parking spaces, but the parking spaces exist in sort of a perpendicular arrangement to the right-of-way. They would be required to back out onto the right-of-way, although that is permitted within the zoning ordinance. It's also worth noting that this proposal would be preserving the exact same parking arrangement as exists now. It is not asking, the variance is not requesting to add additional parking spaces or relocate any existing parking spaces. It is simply asking to construct a garage that once previously existed over current off-street parking spaces. It's also worth noting that back in early 2007, in ZBA case 2006-major-MAJ05, there was another major variance granted that permitted three separate garages, not on the subject property or the adjacent parking parcels, but in three separate areas on the south end of Hollywood Avenue to construct new garages, because the apartments were being in the process of being turned into condominiums. Those garages were never built, and the applicant has exercised, has chosen to go on this route and just reconstructing the garage that previously existed. For one, for one reason, that would save some existing trees that are along the alleyway. It would, it would also sort of bring it back to more what it was, as opposed to creating new structures. It would be building on an existing concrete slab as well. Going to the variance criteria that are found in section 11-3. One, the proposed variance is due to special circumstances and difficulties in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance. Number two, the proposed variance would not serve as a special privilege. Number three, the variance requested was not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly created by the petitioner. Number four, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Number five, the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. And number six, the variance represents the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The options for this case could be to approve the variance as requested, approve the variance with certain terms and conditions. If so, those should be articulated, or the request could be denied. If so, the, the board should articulate the findings supporting the denial, based on the analysis and findings presented in this discussion above, and without the benefit of additional evidence. At this public hearing, staff recommends that the case be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation to approve the major variance to allow a reduction in the setback from five feet to zero feet, with the condition that the garage generally conforms with the Fairlon Village Garage Edition site plan and elevations dated March 29th, 2018, that are also submitted in Exhibit D of this application. Just to note that this is a major variance, so that it is required to be approved with 2/3 of a vote, and it must, and it must be approved by a city council as well. Do you have any questions?
Are there questions for staff?
Okay, let's see if I've got this. In 2007, this structure existed. There were 13 garages there.
Yes.
We said you can go ahead and build three different garages someplace. We said you can go ahead and build three different garages someplace. This thing burned down, and in 2009, totally down. Okay, when did they put up half of it? And why didn't they have to come back to us to do that?
They put up surely half because that was within our rules of what allows them to reconstruct a legally non-conforming structure, which states that if something, if a legally non-conforming structure is damaged, it may be reconstructed if the dam, if the repairs are less than 60% of its fair market value. So, the reconstruction, reconstructed portion was, did not exceed 40% of what the fair market value of the previous structure was, and that's why they were allowed to reconstruct that. If they wanted to cover the rest of these seven stalls, that is where they would be required to seek a variance, because that would exceed the provisions as which they were, under which they were allowed to reconstruct a non-conforming structure.
So, by putting up half of it, they're okay with?
By putting up, covering six of the seven, yes.
Okay, and then, I guess when I drove by there, it doesn't seem to me that there's a uniform pad underneath the seven. It seemed like some of them were raised up a little. Is that the case, or is that my imagination?
There are, there are two, the pad, the two spaces to the far east are slightly, slightly elevated, like an inch higher than the rest, but it should be noted that these parking stalls are individual, so it, you know, they would be, they would be separated by, by walls. Each stall would be separated by a wall.
So, we don't anticipate that being an issue?
I don't believe so. The architect hasn't expressed concern about it.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant or anyone on behalf of the applicant here to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Sam Gilio. I'm working on the project on behalf of Andrew Fell Architecture and Design. I think the staff report was fairly succinct, addressing Mr. Warrenbrand's issue. The demising wall will be right in between that bump, so there won't be any great changes unit to unit. It's just, I, individual units.
Are you fin, are you finished and prepared for questions then?
Yeah, I think the, I think the staff report was fairly comprehensive, so if there are any questions for me?
Thank you. Go ahead.
I think a long time ago there, one of the issues was where the water was going to run off the roofs and stuff, so you guys have, I'm sure, have it running, not onto the adjacent properties, but you have it.
Yes, we've addressed that issue with the downspouts and the others.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Go ahead.
What did you call that wall between the units?
A demising wall? I mean, it's a, I guess it would be individual stalls, yeah.
Are there additional questions for the applicant? I believe that would include any testimony in regards to this case. Ready for a motion relates to this case?
Okay, I'll move the zoning board to approve and forward the ZBA case 2018, Major-07 to the city council with the recommendation to approve the major variance to allow a reduction in the setback from five feet to zero feet with the following conditions. Number one, that the garage generally conforms with the Fairlawn Village Garage Edition site plan and elevations dated March 29, 2018.
It's been so moved, we have a second to that. Now been moved and seconded, is there any additional discussion? Hearing now, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Ms. Yutman?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrand?
Yes.
Mr. Weiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
And Ms. McBarley?
Yes.
This motion has been approved unanimously and will be forwarded on to the city council for their consideration at their...
June 4th meeting.
At their June 4th meeting. Thank you. Is there any old business? Any new business? Any audience participation? Is there a staff report? Study session?
Yes, sir. Chris is going to take it over from here.
Look around the community. Everything you see started as someone's idea. So, today, we're inviting you to start something big in downtown Urbana. So, tell us what you'd like to see and do in downtown Urbana, in the area known as Lincoln Square. How would you transform the nine square blocks into something that will serve our community going forward? Bold projects start with big ideas and a vision for the future. So, tell us, what's in your square?
Did I cut it short prematurely? Okay. So, Mayor Marlin explained it rather well. This is a process of envisioning what's possible for the Lincoln Square area. We want to note that this includes not just Lincoln Square Mall, but several parking properties and the Landmark Hotel that surround the mall as well. So, this is a very large piece of what we have zoned as our downtown district. So, not just the mall, but also the, the mall, the parking that surrounds it and the nearby That's kind of a bird's eye view that gives the scope of what's being looked at. Some properties that are nearby that aren't part of this consideration, such as the courthouse, the IMC building, the old post office, nothing's, you know, we're not looking at, visioning for those, nor the church nearby with the apartment buildings on Race Street. So, as we are looking at this, we're just wanting to get a broad perspective of ideas. We're reaching out to many different groups, stakeholders, and parts of our community to see what they envision might be a perfect future for this property. If they were to think and dream big, what would be ideal to use with the existing mall or with the open parking that's surrounding it? The reason that we're doing this now is there are several factors that have sort of come into play just with the way that our downtown properties are moving. We'll be redoing Green Street, which, all the way from campus to downtown, so that's kind of a gateway corridor to our downtown district from, you know, the nucleus of the metro area. Also, the hotel is up for sale, and there have been some major tenant turnover in the malls, so we thought it would just perhaps be a good time to think about what we'd like to do with the mall properties. The first part of our exercise that we would like to do is what we call is great places. What we'd like you to do is to think of a great place in your mind. It could be a place that's very personal to you. It could be a place that's public or private, a business, a park, a landmark, another community. It could be anywhere. And we'd like you to sort of close or relax your eyes, think about what is it, what's great about it? What, just where, where would this place be? I should also clarify, just to reiterate, that don't hesitate to write down what makes Did everyone have a chance to summarize and write down what they were feeling and thinking? Okay. With that said, starting with Joanne, would you like to share what?
Well, the only place that I could think of that I liked was Chicago, Chicago.
That's a perfect example.
I can hear you. Chicago, Chicago. And I like Michigan Avenue, Chicago.
What particular about those two, either those places or both of them?
Well, it's, in, at the campus gardens, it's the gardens. I mean, there's such a variety of them, and it's just, it's just a great place to be and to sit, to look, start. And Michigan Avenue is always, you know, in the summer and spring, beautiful landscaped. And you can go to the park on this South Michigan Avenue.
So, kind of, kind of a landscaping vegetation theme?
I should say, we don't have to put everyone on the spot, so if there's any other volunteers, but I think we'll be here all night if we get everyone's individual feedback in this way, so, sorry.
Did anyone else care to give what they'd like to share for what they thought of?
Well, I could think of something.
You're all right.
Well, can I just say something?
Yes.
I've seen a few, some, people talk about stuff on the assembly sometimes, and, you know, we don't own the mall.
We own the parking spaces around the mall.
But we don't own the mall or the hotel.
We don't own the hotel. The mall owner, Jim Webster, we've, has been working with us on this process from the start, and is, you know, supportive of us, you know, reaching out to the community like we are to see what's out there, so. And the hotel is for sale, so.
I put down, sitting on the front porch of my farmhouse, I can watch the sunset, watch the crops grow, and it's peaceful and quiet. And I also put down demolish the hotel. When I look at it, I see it, it's like a jumble of pieces of, that have been put together.
There will definitely be a chance to express your thoughts about specific, you know...
But I just wanted to add that.
You'll have a chance, trust me.
Oh, and the other thing I would say, I would love to see, visualize, a public skating rink there. Do you know when I moved here, you could ice skate at Crystal Lake? And it was very pleasant.
Step three, we will have that chance.
I know, but I just thought a little ice rink there would be really...
We're first starting on our favorite place, and then we're going to sort of bring it home to the square.
It would be a favorite place.
We were worried people needed some help with being able to think big, so that's why we started with the great place, but it looks like you're already there, Nancy, so.
Right.
Good job.
Okay.
So, the next exercise we're going to do is what we call a word cloud, or kind of a square cloud, and from that, you know, we would like to ask you to think of what are some of the, you know, short words that you would like to use to describe your square? Just some of the feelings or the thoughts or the sensations, just some of the more abstract ways of, you know, things that you feel or think about your perfect square, if you want to take a minute or two to write that down.
So, by square, he's referring to the seventeen-acre entire site? So, we're trying to get at the feelings, the adjectives, the atmosphere you might want to have there in the future. So, this is where we get just a little touchy-feely, just a little bit. What might you want to do there? So, if you want to use verbs, but try to characterize some things that you envision would be positive to do or to feel there in the future, or maybe even if that's what you have now and you like that.
Why is there an A and a B?
The second, the second part is being more specific. This is kind of more esoteric. The second part is a little more...
So, we're on A?
This is not easy. I know. So, that's why we do an exercise that has words for people that are good at words, and then we'll do drawing for people that are good at drawing, so we're trying to kind of meet people where they are. So, if you can't do that part, we're not going to grade you on it, so.
I got it, I got it. It's obvious people like you doing.
So, with that said, what were some of the, what were some of the words that came to mind when thinking about the, the feelings and thoughts that you wanted to see in Lincoln Square for the entire, within the entire site?
About technology, food, drink, hotel, apartments, retail, but probably by the project gets done, everybody will be buying everything online.
That's good. Anyone else?
I mean, you can't put a lake there.
Put an ice skating rink.
Well, you can ice skate on a lake.
Well, they do in Las Vegas, maybe.
They do.
Well, in the fountains, you know, if you had a large fountain... Well, in the fountains, you know, if you had a large fountain area, I suppose you could ride ice skating in the winter.
You know, and I, and I was going to say, if you want to attract people there, you know, if you have a little ice skating rink in the winter, roller skating, skateboard in the summer, and build different things around that, I mean, that draws a lot of people. Have you ever watched people on skateboards, how dangerous it is? I mean, it's, it's very interesting, actually.
That's, the, those sorts of ideas are exactly what we're looking for, though, just...
So anyway, I'm just thinking.
Unique individual ideas that you come up with, it's what we're seeking. Anyone, one more? Care to share or?
Community gathering spot. And by that, I mean, move, I guess it would be more specific, maybe moving, I know this has been proposed, moving more the county government facilities to the mall so that it would be adjacent to the courthouse and everything fairly centralized and have then more people in the downtown area. Could then take advantage of maybe restaurants and shops and the like.
Okay, that's a thought.
I was thinking about town squares, you know, you go in the larger little towns and it's a square, and there's, they don't have to be a big town square, just even a little one with a little gazebo or something in it. I got off the highway on 74 for the, what's his name? Laredo Taft, you go down 74 towards Iowa, you'll get to a point after Purry where it says Laredo Taft Site. And I got off because I wanted to see it. And it's a small town square where he was born, and in the middle of this town square is one of his bronzes, you know, and the town raised the money to pay for it, and it's just right in the middle of this little square. And you can see that it gets used for stuff. And if we had just, you know, I suppose it's like, what's that little park up there on University, which is not, never...
By the Silver Creek, across from Silver Creek.
Leo Park.
Leo, is that Leo Park? Yeah, I mean, that's a lovely little park. You just have, we just have a little park area where you could do things, and we don't really have that in downtown. It doesn't have to be very big.
It's a good thing worth writing down, so. So with that, we go to the third...
I was wondering...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was also thinking, you know, if the farmer's market is very successful, and if you had some covered areas there that were covered, you could extend the time for the farmer's market, it wouldn't be rained out. You could do antique car shows there, people would have some shelter for their antique cars. That is huge business. Corvette show, I think would be happy to have their cars out of the sun, things like that. I just think there is a way to use that space and bring people there.
There used to be an antique car show that I can remember in, next to the hotel.
Oh, yes, we used to have a lot of them.
So with that, any last, before I move on? Okay. So the third part is where we will go to what we call mapping our square. We're going to, I think, split into two, although...
Oh, wait, no, there's only five, Joanne.
I think we should just do it at one, why don't we just all go to, have them go to the table to your left right there, where we'll have kind of a hands-on exercise where you can sort of go free-form per se. We have a few markers set out and we just are encouraging you to write and visualize, so to speak, some of what you just told me, and maybe you can apply it to more geographic 2D sense on a map of the square, so.
But if somebody does want to work this long, you know, we have to...
Well, there's, yeah, there's that too, but...
This is what we have for anybody.
All right, at this time, having concluded our business, I move that we adjourn.